Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council Budget Workshop. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the workshop. I will now call this meeting to order. I will defer to a member of the city council or staff for the pledge of allegiance. Let me ask, Nick, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? All right, we've done that. I will now defer to the city clerk for the roll call.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Anstead?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Woof?
Present.
Mayor Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a question.
Thank you. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and the second to approve the agenda state your names?
Deborah Klein Lopez, I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Assistant City Councilman Chris Anstead, I second.
I will defer to city clerk for the roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Woof?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving on to public comments. This section is reserved for public comments related to the budget workshop. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written public comments. However, we do have speakers. Carolyn Trassino, followed by Serena Nuzy.
You have three minutes to speak, and your time will end when the red light appears on the podium. Please adjust the microphone and begin.
Mayor Sylvester, city council, and city staff, good afternoon. The Old Agora homeowners support the budget items from the May 14, 2025 goal-setting workshop, particularly the repairs on Chesbrough Road and the design plans for the trails. Given the ongoing fire risks, fixing Chesbrough is crucial for community evacuation, and trails are vital for horse safety. These repairs will benefit dog walkers, equestrians, cyclists, drivers, and parents with strollers daily. Thank you for prioritizing safety in Old Agora. I also thank you for considering interim repairs on Chesbrough that can help us navigate our incredible community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Serena Nuzy, followed by Danielle Borja.
Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. I am a recent, recently reappointed Board of Directors member for the homeowners' association in Old Agora, and I've been asked to speak on behalf of some Board of Directors that could not attend this meeting to express unfortunate disappointment at the decision not to address the sober living and other zoning issues that affect the rural lifestyle of approximately 450 homes in Old Agora. Thank you for your budget support on trails and roadways, which currently impede safe evacuation during wildfires and other emergencies. But I do hope to circle back with you this next fiscal year and see what these and other citizen concerns can be researched and attended to even without specific funding. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Danielle Borja.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. Danielle Borja, President/CEO for the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I had the opportunity yesterday to meet with the Economic Development Committee, and I know there is going to be this budget discussion today around some potential sport of some chamber programs. We discussed some things that we thought would be good synergy with the city's goals around economic development, which included Leadership Conejo, our nine-month leadership program that has a cohort of about 30 that has multiple sessions in Agoura Hills, our 40 Under 40 program that recognizes different young professionals in our community, including a handful from Agora this year. The list is coming out tomorrow. And also our recognition gala, where we have the opportunity to really elevate some of the organizations and people in our region that are really making a substantial impact. And so I just want to thank you for this consideration. Our chamber has had such a long-time partnership with Agora and really appreciate you bringing the support forward for discussion. Our businesses are really challenged right now in this economic environment, and we're working closely with them to give them all the support and resources that they need during this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have no further speaker cards.
Thank you. I would just like to remind our audience watching at home that matters that are brought before us in public comment section, your board cannot discuss them. We can only listen at this time. They have to be agendaized for us to have a discussion. So thank you for that. We're now moving on to discussion action. So discussion of proposed biennial budget for fiscal years '25, '26, and '26, '27. I will defer to our city manager, Nate Hamburger, for the staff presentation.
Good morning, Mayor Sylvester and honorable council members. We are pleased this afternoon to bring you our workshop biennial for fiscal year 2025, '26, and fiscal year 2026, '27. This process has gone through several iterations with the council goals workshop. I want to thank the members of the public that participated in this process. And I want to first just also thank all of our staff, here and not here, that worked really heavily on making all of this budget come together, specifically our finance team and all of the time and effort and all of my ideas that they had to deal with and try to figure things out. So I appreciate all of their input in the council for your support throughout this. So I will turn it over to our Director of Finance, Mr. Abanias, to make the full presentation to you.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. Today, after weeks of internal review, subcommittee meetings, and direction from city council, staff will be presenting the city of Agoura Hills fiscal year 2025, '26, and 2026, '27 biennial proposed budget. The agenda for this workshop is as follows. Staff will provide a general overview of the general fund budget, highlighting accomplishments from fiscal year '24, '25, and the forecasting approach for this budget cycle. Staff will explain the assumptions for revenues and increased cost of expenditures related to the general fund. Staff will also highlight the special funds. Once again, staff reviewed priority of projects and funding sources to ensure projects are funded in this cycle. Staff will give an update of the city's reserves. The budget was developed by some recommendations from the finance subcommittee and the land use and economic development subcommittee. Members from these committees will have an opportunity to offer insight into their recommendations. Staff will seek an opportunity to review the budget with city council regarding any items in the budget book. Assistant City Manager Romero Deva will lead a discussion on this year's community grants. And lastly, staff would welcome the opportunity for any follow-up on the budget by the city Fiscal year 2024, '25 was very busy. City council reviewed and approved a new fee study affecting most departments that will go into effect on July 1, 2025. The city dissolved its relationship with the Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center, and finance staff will begin the final audit of the AHCCC next month. Ladyface Greenway Project is still expected to be completed in 2026. In this year, the city started with some exciting economic development initiatives, such as the recent farmers market, coffee with local businesses, and a review of recent economic development study. For the next budget cycle, the theme is resilience, hope, and collective action, and staff will discuss the budget approach in this unique year, as well as review the general fund and also review of special funds. This slide shows that the city has seven revenue streams that contribute to the overall general fund. The main contributor is the taxes and assessments category. This category takes into account sales and property tax. We have budgeted conservatively and have arrived at an amount of $16,523,303 for fiscal year '25, '26, and $17,070,398 for fiscal year '26, '27. The charges for services category takes into account the changes of the fee study, and staff has forecasted $1,395,023 in the first year, $1,496,518 in the second year. In fiscal year 2024, '25, this category was $1,177,150. We forecasted an increase of $217,873 for next year. This is due to the fee study. Investment income continues to be high due to the city's investments accounts and the interest rate environment. The other revenue category takes into account the tourism admin fee, miscellaneous revenue that the city collects throughout the year, and a loan payment from the redevelopment agency. The overall revenue stream for fiscal year '25, '26 is $20,861,987, and for fiscal year '26, '27, it is forecasted to be $21,542,416. The city has 26 departments that are funded by the general fund, and one account is for our inter-fund transfers. This slide here highlights how public safety is the highest cost for the city out of the general fund and accounts for 27% of all expenditures. In 2026, excuse me, in 2025, '26, we have appropriated $5,649,409 for public safety. It increases to $5,818 to $891 for the fiscal year '26, '27. In recent years, other departments, such as the community development, non-departmental community service, and public works, have had an increase in their operational budgets. This is due to project schedules, planning, and an overall increase in costs. Southern departments have also shown a decrease in costs, such as the automated office systems department saw a decrease due to completed technological projects, and the communications department reduced their contract services due to the hiring of a communications manager. How did we get to our proposed expenditures and revenues and expenditures? In realizing the current macroenvironment, staff along with the city's revenue consultant approached much of the revenues and expenditures with how the impact of tariffs, high interest rates would affect, and high interest rates would affect consumer behavior, and that's how we developed our forecasts, very conservatively. Finance staff also took, asked all department leaders to review their operations and where possible, reduce expenses or possibility of postponing some projects. Staff also cited advice from the finance subcommittee on how to balance the budget and recommended the freezing of two positions, one in the finance department and one in public works. They recommended not funding the city beautification account for this year, recommended not contributing to the Topanga Banjo and Fiddle Concerts and Folk Festival, and also recommended a termination of the Medea Creek contract. But since that meeting, we have been able to fund that agreement using a special fund for Pape. So that one is actually just there for informational purposes. From the land use and economic development, a request for additional funding for the Conejo Valley Chamber was recommended in the amount of $5,000. Taking all of the revenue and expenditures into account for fiscal year '25, '26, revenues are $20,861,987. Expenditures are $20,853,895, leaving a small surplus of $8,092 for fiscal year '25, '26. In fiscal year '26, '27, expected revenues are $21,542 for 416. Expenditures are $21,544,054, leaving a very small surplus of $1,872. In looking over at our special funds, the city currently has 27 special funds, which range from gas tax, traffic safety, Pape, and capital projects, also which are measures R and Measure M. Staff, this particular year, staff has budgeted salaries and projects that are eligible to be funded within the guidelines of each special fund. The special fund budget is $25,383,120 for fiscal year '25, '26, and staff continues to research and seek grants for opportunities for project funding. In terms of the city's reserves, the city has grown, has committed to growing its reserves. In the end of the, the end of this current year, the city will have $13,873,372. It is forecasted at the end of '25, '26, it will have $13,878,464. And at the end of '26, '27, it is forecasted to have $13,880,336. Council should note that staff uses these funds to fund some projects, and these amounts are not immediately liquid to appropriate elsewhere at this point. City manager, if we can, members of the finance and land use economic development at this point, offer some insight into some of the recommendations that I presented earlier, or we can hold off to questions later.
What would our city council like? Did you have questions now that you would, or statements? My thoughts? Okay. Since I'm on both committees. First of all, I would like to thank our staff. You've done an amazing job and also clarified so many things for me so that I could understand in layman's terms what was happening. And I really appreciate your conservative approach because we have got a balanced budget and we do have funds in our reserve. So I know going forward, we're not going to get caught, you know, with our foot behind the line, so to speak. So thank you so much for that. There are some projects that I know we were all hoping to do, and we realize that we have to put those off. So we did, as a council, come up with what we felt were other priorities and what would most benefit our residents. On the finance subcommittee with me is Councilmember Anstead, so would you like to say anything at this point? Or? Okay. So, I mean, do you want me to go, at this, at this time, do you want me to do a sort of a line-by-line of what, why we didn't do certain things? I'm sure you're thinking about the banjo. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is just, there will be an opportunity to discuss the grants about the.
That's not a grant.
No, no, excuse me. But at this point, what staff is asking is just the insight into, yes, how we got into.
Yes.
Excuse me, yes.
Okay, so I don't have anything further to add at this point. Do you, Councilmember Anstead?
I just think that the finance committee, when we were reviewing this, we were reviewing it against the budget, where we were, we were being told that our numbers are basically very close, and unless we do cut some of these programs, we'd be over our budget. So we tried to come up with a way to be able to make sure that the numbers worked on the, on the budget and that we didn't spend more than we, than we have. And in doing that, there was certain things that were recommended to us, and we kind of agreed a lot of these things that we're not funding. This was in order to get to the numbers and hit our budget this year. That was what recommended from staff, and we basically adopted, I think, most of the recommendations from staff.
Yes. And I really appreciate each department ahead seriously looking at their allocations and looking for ways that they could save us money. So thank you all for doing that. Any other comments on, on that? Yes, would you like to go ahead?
I can add just to your comment about land use. We, Mayor Sylvester and I met yesterday with Danielle Borja of the chamber, and consistent with some of our other budget priorities in terms of economic development, we felt that it was important to reestablish a relationship with the chamber on a more formal basis in a way that still protects some of the issues that we had a few years ago when we were discussing our overall contract. So what we felt was going to check all the boxes is to support several of the events that we already participate in. So for example, the 40 Under 40, the leadership program, things like that, as sponsors, then that we already, we already do that, and this allows us to have some marketing attached to it. And half the budget of that was already in other places. So for example, we have a meeting and training budget. We have leadership budgets, and so it's not that much of an increment to be able to kind of formalize a partnership again. And I think it's really important for our community, particularly in these times where we are trying to focus on economic development, which is a huge, huge issue for our small businesses right now. So we can answer any questions as we go on, but just wanted you to know from the land use economic development committee why, our thought process.
And, and I would also like to add that our city has also stepped up with our local businesses, and I would like to thank our Assistant City Manager, Ramiro Deva, for everything he has done in the past year to develop those relationships with our local businesses. So thank you for that.
Mayor, would now be the right time for me to suggest an idea around the Fiddle Fest, or should I hold that?
Now? Yes, go ahead.
Well, and honestly, it is consistent with economic development, as our former mayor, Elise Buckley-Webber, reminded me that the reason she was so excited about, I mean, there are multiple reasons that she was so excited about supporting the Fiddle Fest, but a big one is it is great community development for our city. It is great publicity for our cities. So I would propose that rather than completely zeroing it out, that we instead consider a contribution of $1,000, taking it out of our, and Diego, I heard you say we have a small reserve this year of $8,000, and a very small reserve next year of $1,800. And so just reducing our, our $8,000 down to $7,000 to be able to support this event that I think really does serve our residents in multiple ways. You know, you guys heard me at the last one, and I had no idea when I made that presentation at our last city council meeting that we were considering completely zeroing it out, that it was a really magical event. And I stood up on that stage, and I talked about Agoura Hills as the gateway to the Santa Monica Mountains, soon to be the future home of the largest wildlife bridge and all of the, and we got cheers from that audience. I asked about Agoura Hills residents that were there, and people responded. I would, I would venture to say possibly as many people that, well, we got, we have a lot of people there in the same way that we have people from Agoura Hills at our concerts in the park, but lots of people from lots of other places. I think the same honestly is true of Fiddle Fest, and we can draw so many people. They come and they eat at our, at our restaurants, they are frequenting, and it will be even more true if that is at Paramount Ranch. And I talked to the organizers, they are hoping to get it at Paramount Ranch next year. They're working on that. The construction is supposed to be done. So I recognize that we are in very tight budget times, and I do feel like it is pennies on the dollar for what we get for the city to be able to support it.
Can I open that up to other council members? Yes, Councilmember.
I would love to add on to that. I'm in agreement with you on this. For years, we had the Topanga Fiddle Fest as part of our community grant, outreach grant funding, which drove me nuts because we did it every year, and it took away from some of our other grant applicants. And I argued that if we are going to do this every year, it needs to be a part of our regular budget process and not discretionary every year. So that is how it had been. So I was sad to see that it was discretionary again. One of the things that I want to ask our, Diego, is that our reserve percentage is in the, is 67%, but our, the required reserve is 40%. And so while I am not at all suggesting we, oh my gosh, she got all, he panicked. No, I am not, I know that we use those funds to front a lot of our infrastructure projects and that we need a very high reserve for that reason, and I'm not suggesting that we spend that down. But what I am a little uncomfortable is that we're actually increasing that reserve percentage a little bit every year while we are cutting beloved programs that are residents, that our residents participate in. So I would also be willing to use five, actually, I was going to say the full, I think it's $5,000 that we've done in the past, right, Amy?
It was.
$3,000. So yeah, so well, I just saved you $2,000. No, I would, I would actually argue to take the $3,000 out of the eight, of the little cushion that we have because it is going to come back to us in terms of transit occupancy tax and things like that. We do benefit from it. So I'm in favor of, of being the consistent sponsor that we have been over the past few years, really since its inception.
Okay. Thank you. And what are you proposing for year two?
I'm proposing we talk about it in year two.
I mean.
Can we?
Can we do?
What? Yeah, I'm sorry, my mic was acting up today. So what we could do is we always do a mid-cycle review.
So what we could do is we always do a mid-cycle review, and so we'll have a better understanding of where our revenue sources are at when we go through that process, and then I can give you a better idea of, of where the $3,000 would come from. Or we can also look at operational type things, or maybe a project that doesn't move forward, those kind of things. So if you want to commit, if the council's desires to commit to the first year, I'd recommend doing that, and then we would bring it back to you for discussion or consideration at our mid-cycle review.
Okay, Councilmember Anstead?
I'm good with that.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yeah, I'll jump on the banjo or bandwagon, if you will. Especially because it's coming back to Paramount Ranch, the economic input it can have for the city. I see, oh, yeah, I'm supportive of that, and I appreciate Councilmember Anderson bringing that forward because I think it pays dividends for, for the city, and it's something I would like to see. So thank you.
Okay, and I will agree with my fellow councilmembers. So do we have to just give you direction to reinstate? That would be under Amy Brink's?
Yep, we have the direction, and we'll make that adjustment and then bring the final iteration to you at your next meeting.
Okay.
City Manager, if I can just confirm one other aspect? The recommendation made by the Land Use and Economic Subcommittee is in the budget. So it is, this is confirmation that that appropriation from yesterday is in this year's budget, and I will go ahead and make a note of the 3,000 that council has just appropriated to the festival.
Thank you.
This, this slide here is just a review of the overall budget document, and just presenting to city council if they've got any questions, follow-up, or direction for staff regarding the overall document. If not, we can proceed to the next slide, which is the Community Grants Awards Discussion. The Finance Subcommittee met on May 19th to discuss appropriations for community grants. The city council has been provided with the list of community grants for the fiscal year 2526, and I will hand it over to Assistant City Manager Ramiro Deva to lead the discussion.
All right, thank you Director Abanias, and hello, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So this takes us to the community grants discussion. As Director Abanias mentioned, the Finance Committee did meet, and for those of you who've been on committee in the past, this is a very difficult conversation each year as we, we have limits on, on what we can work with. And so the, the committee always is tasked each year with trying to figure out how to divvy up that money amongst a multitude of amazing organizations. So this year was no different. We started the finance discussion with the, this Finance Committee discussion by reiterating the importance of trying to stay within the limit, which was $30,000. And the committee was very good about doing that. And so you see in the list in front of you that the $30,000 limit was adhered to and the different breakdowns for the different organizations that are being recommended for funding. Before I pass this back to Mayor Sylvester, I will note that as we go through this discussion, this will be that portion where, based on what the councilmembers want to discuss about the different organizations, if there are any changes to the recommended amounts by the Finance Committee, this is where we can go ahead and kind of make those changes and look and see what those numbers are. We do have a laptop over here at the staff dais, so at any point in time, if you want to kind of know where we're at, if there's any money still floating out there that we need to assign, or if we're over the 30, we can go ahead and report that back to you at any point in time. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Mayor Sylvester, who along with Councilmember Anstead, they did form the Finance Committee, and over to you, Mayor Sylvester.
Thank you so much. This is one of the fun and hard things to do every year because it's wonderful to be able to give money to all the different organizations in our city and in our local community. And it's also sad because we had, this year, the request was for $78,960, and we had to whittle that down and bring it right in at 30,000. And Councilmember Anstead and I worked very hard at this, and we did bring it down to 30,000, and we did manage to give something to everybody that applied. So we haven't turned anybody down, which I'm very proud about, but we have had to reduce the amounts. And then when we, when looking at the schools, basically what we looked at was sort of the enrollment numbers. So the elementary schools have the few, you know, the fewest number of students, the middle school has, has more, and then the high school has the most. So we sort of allocated a set amount for each elementary school, and then a little bit more for the middle, and then a little bit more for the high school. So that's how that broke down. And then again, for the library, the media, we have kept it down to, it's like $2 a pupil of our Agora residents. So, so that's how we did those allocations. And I, do you have anything else to add to that, Councilmember Anstead, of how we allocated?
No, I, I think that we tried to be pretty fair and equitable with a lot of the distribution, and we had a certain amount of money that we were trying to get to. And in order to do that, we had to take away a little bit maybe from some that we appropriated last year, but we tried to keep it, if people were getting funded last year, we tried to keep them either right at their amount last year or a little bit under. And, and so that, that's kind of, and then we funded a lot of new, some new projects this year as well. I do want to point out that I made sure that I was not voting on anything to do with the LVUSD specifically because my wife is a teacher in the school system, and I wanted to make sure that that wasn't an issue. But other than that, I think everything else, if there's any questions from the rest of the councilmembers, I'd be glad to, to explain it, but I think we're, we should be pretty much in line with what we did last year with trying to add on some additional for this year.
And I would also like to thank those applicants, especially the new ones who came and spoke with the Subcommittee, to explain who they were and why they were asking for our support. So shall I just open up? Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Thank you. I have one question and then a couple of comments. Mayor Sylvester, when you say that you're, and this is just a question, I'm not challenging you, I'm just trying to understand, for the, when you're talking about the schools, and you're saying obviously Agora High has more kids, but there are also several boosters that are asking that then represent less kids. So without going into calculus, are you, are you basically saying that you're giving more to Agora High as a whole, right? Like you're adding up the different boosters?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. Okay, thank you for doing that. I know that's always tough. And then my, my comments that I, you know, would like to see addressed, and I, I think, once again, I think with a tiny, tiny bit of cushion, we might be able to make it happen without taking away from anybody else. It, it's a pretty big hit for Malibu Search and Rescue. We gave them $2,200 last year, and it's only 1,000. They do so much in our area, not just searching and rescuing, but really being out there in this time of climate change. And I, I would like to at least see them get what they get, what they had last year or somewhat close to that because that's a pretty big hit. The other one that I think is just, does so much incredible work for our area directly is Many Mansions. And so, you know, if there's any way we can keep it at 2,500 like we have for the last several years, which is what they're asking, I think that's really important, and those would be the two that I would like to, to see happen. And hopefully we can do that without reducing anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
I will just say hats off to you and Councilmember Anstead. You have a really, really difficult job, and I, I support, I mean, I'm certainly very open to Councilmember Klein Lopez's suggestion, and I support your recommendations, and I'm grateful to you for your service in making these really difficult decisions.
You. Councilmember Wolf?
Yeah, echoing, thank you for, I was sat on this committee, and it's a very, very hard decision-making process. One question I had was regarding the Agora High PFC. Did they not apply this year, or what's?
No, we had no request.
Okay. So I do want to make a comment, like Councilmember Anstead said, I do sit on the board of the Conejo Future Foundation, and so I, I just want to make that known. I appreciate that the Cougar Conservancy has applied. They do a lot of really good work. I know that we're limited funding, but with the Wildlife Corridor going in, their ability to provide education to residents about coexisting with wildlife, I think it's critical. So if there's any way to get them more funding is something I would, I would be interested in. Other than that, I, I appreciate the work that was done on this. So I, I appreciate, yeah, I can move forward.
Thank you. So if we are to increase, are we going to stick with this 30,000, or are we going to pull this out of reserve?
Is that a question to me?
Well, it's a question to the whole board because we.
City Manager, I can answer that.
Yes, thank you.
The appropriation, the previous years, mayor and city council has always been 30,000. If we need to increase that, we are very tight at the moment in terms of adding any more appropriations to that full amount. But we do have, with the, with the approved appropriation that council just voted on, there's a $5,000 sort of surplus on that, which again, just limits sort of our gap for that particular year. But again, it's up to council's discretion. But in the past, the 30,000 has always just been the appropriation dedicated to community grants.
We actually have gone over that.
Yeah, we have. Maybe before your time.
Thank you.
But, but there's always, I won't say always, but there have been years where we, there's been some cushion on that by a couple thousand bucks.
Okay, so let me ask you this. If we changed the Cougar Conservancy from 750 to, they were very specific, 13.9515 cents, if we made that one, if we increased Malibu Search and Rescue, would you be comfortable with 2,000? If we increase that to 2,000, and Many Mansions, if we move them up back to 2,500, what does that add? What does that put us over?
We are looking at an increase of $2,145.15.
Okay, so.
I would make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Councilmember Anderson, a second.
Till we have a, a roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to.
Thank you. So thank you, everybody. We have our community outreach grant program approved for this year. Well done. What are we moving on to?
At this point, since we are concluding the presentation, if I could just reiterate the changes that were done here before we bring the budget back for adoption, I would appreciate it. We started off with a surplus of $8,092. There's been an approved appropriation to the Banjo Festival for $3,000, leaving a surplus of 5,092. With the current community grant adjustment, I rounded it up to 2,146. It leaves us with a surplus of $2,946. I'm assuming also that the recommendations from the Finance Subcommittee is approved, as well as the recommendation from the Economic and Development Committee have been approved. If that's the case, at this point, staff is ready for any questions, feedback, or any further direction.
I think, are we, subcommittees all approve, correct? Yes, so thank you. I know you've been extremely conservative with us, so we're keeping our fingers crossed.
We will bring, we will move into a quarterly review with this budget. It's such a unique year, we'll bring it to Finance Subcommittee if it needs to come to city council. We'll definitely be bringing it, just, it's just a very unique year this year.
Thank you for all your support and hard work. All right, so are we?
If there's any final feedback from the council, comments, any direction?
Would you like?
Yeah, I just want to echo the mayor's thanks because I also, I think we all have served on the Finance Committee. I think it's important that we all sit on the Finance Committee at some point in our service to the, to the city. It's very important. But, you know, we rely so much on you and your team, and you do do such a good job in stewarding these public funds, and I really want to reiterate that these are taxpayer public funds. We take the, we take it very seriously that they go to use for our community. And so I also want to really thank you and thank the Subcommittee for the work. I think it's one of the most important things we do, and I say this every year, but I will repeat it every year, that our budget is our moral document. And so when we are prioritizing certain things, it's telling the world what we value and what we think are, is important for our community members. So I, once again, just really want to express my thanks to all of you.
Any other council?
I'll just echo the gratitude and the appreciation. Diego and City Manager Hamburger, I very much appreciate as a new councilmember, the many hours that you have spent walking me through this. You were kind, you were patient, you were thoughtful, and it is so clear to me how much heart and thought you are putting into the moral document and how reflective it is of the council and the community, how hard it is, the job that you're doing, and just very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wolf?
I, I really like the theme, resilience, hope, and collective action. I think that's, that's powerful. As great as this was, you know, I, I know that we all wish it could be more because there's unlimited wants and needs in the city, and so it's a hard job to whittle it down, but I think that we have kind of picked some of the most pressing issues with emergency preparedness and economic viability and preparing some of our areas for evacuations. So I'm proud of the work that we did with a limited budget, and I hope that in future years that we can come here with a more robust budget. But I'm proud of what we're going to be doing with what we have. So thank you.
Councilmember Anstead?
I think one of the things that I agree with my fellow councilmembers that have commented that the budget reflects kind of our priorities, that the, one of the things up there that was the first thing that was put up there was the largest percent of our budget is spent on public safety. And this council cares about public safety. We, and everything that we do, or, and I can only speak for myself, but, and everything that I do, one of the first things that I first check off in my mind is, is this going to affect public safety in the community, and how can I minimize the impact on public safety? And so it's always a concern of the council member, of a council member, is the public safety. And so I just want to reiterate that that's, that is a very high priority. And then obviously, the next highest priority is the projects that affect our city and economic development is obviously one of those, and so we put an emphasis on that. And then we also put an emphasis on these community projects and trying to, to fund what we can with our budget here in Agora for these community projects. So I thank staff again for all their hard work on it, and I think it's come up with a great budget, and I'm very proud of, of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments from staff? No? Well, that being said, again, thanks to all of you for keeping us on the straight and narrow and for looking out for our city, and especially under the leadership of our city manager, Nathan Hamburger. We really appreciate everything you do for us. So thank you, everybody. And with that, the regular city council meeting will begin at 6:00 PM this evening. This meeting is now adjourned.